All right, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting order. It is 7:00 PM. I don't think we have any amendments to the agenda, do we? I'm gonna take that as no.
I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
You have motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Uh, I guess just a regular vote this time. No vote by roll call.
Don't forget, you gotta say all in favor.
Oh, did it not go through? I think I maybe can all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Why? Any opposed? No, didn't sound like it. So, moving on, we've got a presentation for the Oregon Heritage Commission.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name is Anne Levant Proul and I am the newly elected Chair of the Oregon Heritage Commission. And I'm so happy to be here. I want to thank Elena Turpin for, for bringing this to our attention and the city of Almsville for letting me come in today and, and let you guys know how, how special we think you are. Um, I see you've got the banner up there, which is great. Usually when I do this, I get to like stand and hold it up or something, but it looks really nice there. So I'm here to announce that, um, in its 53rd year, the Almsville Corn Festival is being designated as an Oregon Heritage Tradition. And it's joining the ranks of some really great Oregon traditions like the Pendleton Roundup and the Great Oregon Steam Up, the Cannon Beach Sandcastle Contest and the Portland Greek Festival. You had to, had to meet some pretty rigorous criteria to become an Oregon Heritage Tradition. This is only the 26th Heritage Tradition that we have ever designated and we've been doing this for a long time now. So you should be really proud. Things like your event has to have been in continuous operation for at least 50 years. And we made exceptions last year for the first time since World War II. For, um, to, to say that if, if a festival wasn't able to go on during the pandemic, that it wouldn't count against the 50 years because during World War II, that was also the case, but you guys did it anyway. And, um, I have to say that not too many heritage traditions can organize a drive-through corn giveaway. That was pretty amazing. It must have a public profile and a reputation that distinguishes it from other more routine events. And it also has to add to the livability and identity of the state of Oregon. And those are just a couple of the criteria. And, um, when we received this nomination for the Corn Festival to become a heritage tradition, my, my fellow commissioners and I found that you easily meet the criteria. And also we were amazed that we have never been to the Corn Festival and we're all planning to come. Some of the things that really impressed us were that corn is a heritage crop. It was, it was a crop when the festival started and even when agriculture changed in the area and diversified, this event keeps that heritage of, of, um, corn alive and that's really great. We love the things that have continued on since the beginning, like the parade and the giving away of hot buttered corn and the games, as well as the new things that have been added that keep adding to the attractiveness of the festival. And that you attract both local community members and out-of-town visitors, both local people being attendees and vendors and out-of-towners being attendees and visitors. And all of this contributes to heritage tourism in Oregon, which is what we're all about. We love the creativity with which you estimate how many people come because usually we insist that you be able to tell us how many people come, but telling us how many pounds of corn gets sold, that's good too. And I personally loved that you contract with a local farmer to provide the, the corn. So the money goes, goes back into the community, which is great. So it is with great joy and admiration that I, on behalf of the Oregon Heritage Commission, declare Almsville's Corn Festival an Oregon Heritage Tradition. Thanks for doing it.
Thank you, Anne.
I think with that, I can depart.
Sure, we'll allow it.
Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I, if mayor, if I could just have the floor for just two minutes here, I, I, I did want to thank the commission for their work. On behalf of the city, but also recognize that for 53 years, a lot of community volunteers from this area really worked hard to keep that tradition alive. And even though, um, you know, uh, some of them have moved and some of them have passed and some of them are still here, but, uh, maybe have been overworked by past corn festivals. And there's a more, uh, influx of new people that come in and take that tradition and continue it forward. But I just want to recognize all those folks that have built it and worked hard to keep it what it is today. But then I did want to thank one of my staff, Elena Turpin, who worked on the application for the Heritage Foundation and worked closely with the board to meet the, make sure that we met the criteria to get the designation put to the city. So, thank you.
Definitely. Thanks, Ron.
Are we gonna be sporting that flag up at Corn Festival this year or the banner?
Feel like, uh, you know, the Cowardly Lion, you know, and Wizard of Oz where he gets all his ribbons put on and he gets that giant blue ribbon put on, you know?
Right.
Kind of how I feel right now. So awesome job for everybody to help make that happen.
All right. So next we've got public comment. So since, uh, I mean, we do have like one Zoom attendee. Do we have anyone physically present that wishes to make comment? It's, I'm guessing that's a no. Uh, do we have anyone online that would like to make a comment? You can just press a little button to raise your hand if you would like to. And that's looking like a no. So, uh, let's see. Consent agenda. Everybody get a chance to read through it? Any questions, comments, concerns? Do we have motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a no. So, uh, no public hearing, no old business, new business. We have the, uh, Cakes Unlimited Contract. Uh, that is the company that is going to be managing the skate competition just before the Port of the Park.
I put a, a report inside the council packet. I'm happy to just answer any questions, but as council knows, this was, uh, kind of an added event. And the council and the mayor saw, uh, a vendor to be able to do that for us. The mayor was able to connect with somebody. And this is the contract we need in order to just provide some buffer between the event and the city. I did send this to, uh, to Rolando at Cakes and, um, he looked it over and said, everything looked good. He wanted, uh, a little change of the time of the event and I, I made that change and sent it back to him. That was his only.
Yeah. So, uh, for anybody doesn't know, you know, Cakes is a, a local company. They've got a storefront down in, uh, downtown, um, making clothing, but you know, very involved in the skating lifestyle. They've got decks and trucks and all the parts and everything. Great little local company. Um, and Rolando's a guy that I know personally, so I think they're gonna put on a great little event. Did anybody have any issues with the contract?
I felt like it clearly defines a lot of the responsibilities for it, so I, I didn't see anything.
Did you want a motion, Ron, or just a, a good old fashioned head nod?
Uh, no, motion please. Yep.
Go to accept the agreement for Cakes Unlimited to host a skate competition in Milford Park on August 20th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a no. All right. Moving on. Next, we've got the DLDC grant draft letter support.
Yeah, this is actually an opportunity, as council knows, we're, we're contracted with the Mid Willamette Valley Council Governments to work on our buildable land inventory, which is a piece that's needed to be able to submit an application for UGB expansion. So they'll do a housing needs analysis, um, as part of that. And, uh, there was an influx of money that came into DLCD and with that, an opportunity to open up a pool of grants for smaller cities, which typically this, these grants would only be available for cities above 10,000 in population. Um, and, and so even though we're in the middle of a, a project, uh, right now there is an opportunity for us to go ahead and apply for some funds to help supplement the cost of that work. And we look for every dollar we can get. So if you approve this tonight, we will be submitting an application, uh, to help out with that project.
You're muted.
Does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns? I'll take that as a no. So do we have a motion?
Move to approve, um, submitting the letter, um, to the Department of Land Conservation Development regarding, uh, our application for, um, some grant funds for UGB expansion as presented by staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. Ron, your report please.
Right. Uh, just a couple of quick things in my report. It's gonna be a short report because we're, we're, we're still buttoning up a lot of projects, but we did do a tour of the new kitchen. Mayor, I know you got to see it, uh, in, it's not quite finished stage. But it does look really nice. We gave tours to folks earlier that came. And I just wanted to, uh, take a moment to thank Public Works. They're, they're, they're juggling a lot of things at one time in addition to their normal duties. We've had a couple of major breakdowns in our, um, system as well that they've been dealing with. So they, they've really been big, busy. I think, I think they're, they won't talk to me after Corn Festival for a few days. They'll make themselves probably scarce, but Public Works really worked hard on it. They were in here today, actually putting the finish touches on the kitchen. And so I just want to call them out. Also Pacific Power Foundation, we want to make sure that we acknowledge that they did contribute to this project with a grant, um, last year. And we actually applied for a grant again this year to, um, help with, I think we applied for a grant related to the MODS Village because we've got to get power connected to that eventually as well. So Pacific Power did help with a supportive grant for this. And then of course council for identifying this as a project and, um, allowing, uh, a line item in the budget that could help us do this project. So thank you for that because it is a really nice kitchen. It is a, a complete contrast from what was here before. And I think actually modernizes the whole building really. And so, uh, also talk a little bit about our audio video system because this is really the first meeting, even though this has been installed for about six months. It's the first meeting where we've actually been able to use it. And I don't know if council, uh, feels like they can hear well. Uh, we've added new speakers. Uh, this is a, a digital, um, uh, voice system so that if you talk too loud, it kind of automatically adjusts so that you don't get that reverb, um, that we were having problems with. And I think people in the audience can hear really well, right? Turn the camera over there.
From my side, everything's coming through pretty clear. So it seems to be working well.
And you're coming in really clear too. We've done a few tests and the, the only area that we're really having trouble with, but we think we got that figured out was when people would zoom in, they actually were very loud. But I think we got that adjusted today and the mayor's coming in clear and we can all hear him. Um, and we're able to use both the Zoom platform and in-person meetings. So, um, you know, we wouldn't have been able to put a system like this in unless we planned for it as a project and budgeted it. Um, ourselves, as you know, we, Steve and I kind of fumbled around with the old system and we're not experts. And I, I think we had for our budget, we, we actually had it running pretty good, but it was nice to be able to bring an expert in, to put up additional screens. So if we're doing presentations in the future, regardless of where people are sitting in the building, they should be able to have a good view of those presentations, especially when we're doing in-person budget meetings, uh, things like that, when you're looking at a lot of numbers. So yeah, just call that out and, uh, I'm glad, we're glad to check the box, so to speak, on that project and continue to move on with a, a lot of other projects. The dog park is completed. Um, the only thing we're waiting for out there is, um, grass girl, which will probably be next spring at this point. And, uh, and some benches that we're gonna install. We'll, we'll add to that a little bit, uh, this fall or before next spring, we'll, we'll put in, we're gonna put in a little landscaping, some, some trees, we'll plant a few trees around to provide some additional shade out there, but that, that's, that's pretty much done. And then our ADA swing, um, we're, we're working on the foundation on that. Yeah, we wanna, the swing frame and everything is in, but, and, and we, we bought a, um, a system, a matted system, which we typically would not have in our parks and, um, we're working on getting that. It doesn't seem to be as stable as we want it. We don't want people to roll into it and then, and then sink down. So we're working on that. That, that, that project is underway. And then, um, our MODS Village, um, we're working tirelessly to get that, uh, it'll be usable for Corn Festival. It probably won't be a hundred percent complete, but we'll use the building regardless. Our goal is to try to get the front of the building finished, doors, windows and siding, um, on the front. And if we can get that done before Corn Festival, then, um, we'll be, we'll be happy campers. We've really struggled with, um, a number of these over 100 degree days. And I think we got three of them again this, this week. And that's kind of plagued us, uh, along with, um, material, uh, material is just, everything has been really difficult to get. And you order stuff, you get a delivery date and then that date doesn't mean anything to anybody. That date could be four years from now as far as folks are concerned. So we're really struggled with getting stuff in and, uh, dealing with vendors, but we're getting there. It's a little more frustrating than we'd liked, but we're getting there. And, um, I think, like I say, I think that's gonna be good. I did show some of the council members that were here earlier, some video of our new corn maze. So I hope people come down and see that at the Corn Festival and, um, we keep broadcasting it on our social media platforms and we'll really ramp up this week, uh, with our social media, ads and posts and kind of tease folks and talk to folks about all the things that, um, will be available to Corn Festival. So hopefully that goes. Um, staff and I are just working on some final details. Uh, we did get the float frame built for the, um, grand marshals over the weekend and we've got decorations on order. Hopefully they'll be here in time, but if they're not, we'll pivot and we'll figure it out. Um, but we'll have a really nice float, uh, for our grand marshals. They'll be, they'll be well taken care of and represented. And then, um, else did we have going on? It seems like there was something else, but it slipped my mind. But, um, yeah, just thanks. Again, thanks to council for your support and the projects. We like doing them and Steve, Steve likes doing them. We do, we do like doing them. And again, I just want to acknowledge Public Works. They, I tell you, they really stepped up and a lot of the, the skills, we're trying to do a lot of projects on a relatively small budget. And so we could not have built MODS, um, unless we had done it in-house. And, and so Public Works, if you go down there and look at the quality of the workmanship, um, it's, it's really good. It's as good as we would have contracted from any vendor. And they're not experts in concrete. Uh, they don't do it every day. They're not, you know, necessarily experts in the building field. They don't do that every day. You know, we're more repair, uh, maintain, uh, is really more the type of work what we do. But, uh, the work that they've done down there is, is exceptional as far as I'm concerned. So and really that's my report. There's a report from Public Works in your packet. There's a report, report from our police department in your packet. If you have any questions on those, I'll try to answer those. We did also have our national night out last week. Uh, and, uh, we had overall good attendance throughout the city. I think we had five or six locations. Uh, some of them were attended a little lighter and some were really heavy. So, uh, really that's the idea with national night out is get out into the neighborhoods and bring those neighbors together. And so I thought that went, uh, really well as well. And I, I know I saw a few of you at various locations. I think we were leapfrogging all of us from location to location to meet people, but yeah, it was good. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I would just like to say that the police department did a great job with their raffles with the kids. They loved them. Nico and I passed them out at Wildwood and did the drawings and it was a blast working with kids and doing that.
It was fun and it was neat also. We had a, I think a couple of, it was either one or two, I think, new hosts this year for, um, national night out. And it was just kind of exciting to see new people involved and to actually say, wow, it's actually not as difficult as I thought it would be. I may want to do it again next year. And, um, there were also some interactions too. I saw people, um, there was a, I think two neighbors that like lived by each other for five years. I hadn't ever really talked or interacted. They took the opportunity to do that. And it's like, well, this is what it's all about, opening up those lines of communication, those barriers. And shoot, I mean, it was, I, I couldn't count on my hand the number of people I had seen that I hadn't interacted with in person in months. They're just awesome to see. So just hopefully, you know, we're heading in that direction where things continue to open up and we're able to enjoy each other's company. But yeah, no kudos to the police department and the volunteers for making it happen. It was awesome.
Fantastic. Yeah. So two, two things quickly, just one for council to be aware, you know, Ron talked about kind of modernizing the look of the community center. So one of the things we did talk about is, uh, one of those sections where we've got a bunch of the old yearbook photos and whatnot. Potentially, uh, giving those back to the historical society and getting, just getting pictures of, of the projects that the council has completed. So that when people come into the community center, like they, sometimes people aren't always aware of, of, you know, where, where their money is going. And so having pictures of some of those projects that are, are more recent projects that people can walk in and see like, oh, this, this is what the council has been doing. This is what Public Works has been doing. Um, I think that's going to help to just kind of like educate the community a little bit and keep people involved. And so I know that's something that we had talked about doing as well. And I think we're gonna try and make happen. And then in regards to Corn Fest, Ron, uh, have you been in touch with the grand marshals at all?
No.
Okay. So my plan was when I get back to put them in touch with you, just so that we can give them all the details of, you know, where, where we want them and when. And then, um, when we actually go down to the corn or to the, to Porter Boone Park and like kick off the event, I was hoping to have like, just some sort of little like short narrative about each one of them and why they were selected as grand marshal. So that, you know, maybe if we got, you know, the microphone set up and everything over at the, the amphitheater, we can kind of just put that out to the community like, hey, these are, these are why these three individuals were selected as grand marshals.
Uh, we could do that if you would like. I mean, it's up to you, but we could, we could do that at the parade. We could stop, uh, the grand marshals at the announcer station.
Yeah, that works too.
Do you want us to develop that mayor or is that something that?
I mean, would, I, I'm gonna have about a week after I get home. So I mean, that's something I can probably do. And then just get it to you and take, take a little bit of work off you.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's fine. And if you want to go ahead and send me, uh, their contact information, I, I probably have a couple of them already, but if you send it to me, I'll go ahead and contact them in advance just to stay in touch with them. And, um, you know, uh, Capra Chevrolet did come through and say that they would provide a truck to pull the, the trailer with, uh, which is great because we're gonna be so busy, you know, it's hard to find drivers and vehicles and things like that.
I, I, I think the backup we were talking about using mine, weren't we?
So, uh, so that, that'll be great, but we'll have that down there decorated and ready to go. Um, and they'll just have to jump on. We'll provide some candy for them. Uh, if they'd like to have some stuff to throw out, they may bring their own. As you know, it always runs out, but I'll let them know all that in an email. Um, and then we'll provide candy for council as well. So.
Excellent.
We'll get that for you guys.
Cool. Appreciate it, Ron. We can go ahead and move on. Counselors, anything to report? I'm here, nothing. So, uh, for me, I will be back. Uh, they, they, they set our flights up kind of crazy. So I'm actually, I'm leaving at like 1:30 in the morning on Friday. But I actually get back same day. So I'll be back late Friday night. So any, any last minute, you know, corn fest stuff we have, I should be available for. But moving to good of the order, there was, there was one thing that's come up recently in the community that I wanted to talk to the council about and just get a kind of a warm fuzzy one direction or the other. You know, this, this talk of, uh, children having to wear masks when they go back to school. I know that that's kind of been a, a, a topic that's given a lot of parents some heartburn. And, and I do see both sides of the discussion. What I wanted to ask is if the council would be in support of just sending a letter to, uh, Representative Moore Green and to Senator Patterson, just voicing our support for the school district to have local authority over whether students should wear masks or not. I, you know, I, I think everybody's aware that I'm, I'm an advocate of government should always occur on the lowest level possible. And I do think that the school district is in a better place to understand when and where students should be wearing masks as opposed to up on the state level. So I just kind of wanted to ask the council what all your feelings on that are. And if we are in support of sending a letter to both of them, uh, just voicing our support for that.
So, so mayor, um, and I, I, I just want to jump in here real quick. And I think the council can talk, talk this issue through and actually make a decision. But I think it would be courtesy, uh, courtesy on the city's part to reach out to, uh, the superintendent and school board members first, um, because I just feel like this is really their issue, not the city's issue. And, and now we're interjecting ourselves into an issue that they're dealing with. And I don't know that we know all the particulars behind it, but I, I would just say that if you do want to draft a letter, you might want to do that contingent on reaching out to the school board members and see if they're supportive of, of that.
I, I disagree. We're, we're, we're asking for local authority, which means the school district, we're not interjecting ourselves into their authority at all. My intent with this is to be a voice in support of the parents in the community who have expressed their concern. If the school board, I mean, we're not, we're not interjecting into how the school board manages their business or how the district manages their business. This is more the, the council voicing our support, uh, in favor of the concerns that have been raised by parents within the community.
Okay, yep.
My feelings, I feel like that the parents should have the choice, but if we can't do that, I agree with mayor to, uh,
Well, and you know, if I'm taking this in right, you know, I, I think this is, you know, a letter of support essentially is what we're doing, right mayor? I mean, you know, we're not necessarily, um, prescribing or dictating, I think, you know, and any sort of, you know, feelings, you know, there. I mean, because obviously I do kind of agree a little bit with Ron as far as it being kind of their lane. But if it's something that we're, you know, voicing kind of our collective, you know, that the council chooses belief that, you know, I think the best policies, if it's handled locally, then I'd be all for that. And I think that's kind of, you know, my distinction on it. Cause I do think that, you know, not, we all know, you know, not one size fits all. But it may work for one school district, doesn't necessarily work for the other. But I think if we're just simply voicing our support for local But may work for one school district doesn't necessarily work for the other, but I think if we're just simply, um, voicing our support for local control, then I think that would be, you know, a prudent thing.
And, and I think if we worded that we're writing this on behalf of the local parents.
Yes.
Uh, and not necessarily on behalf of the school board, that would satisfy that issue or concern.
Correct.
I think it's just like, more so us doing our deed of if the community's reaching out to us, we're not giving the impression that it's going unheard of. Well, we're just going to stay in our lane. Sorry about, you know, how you feel about this, but just being a voice for them a little bit and saying, no, we will support that if that's what you're wanting. Um, however, it's not our jurisdiction or our, our authority, but we'll at least step up and say something, to make sure that if it's not being heard, that somebody hears it. And, but.
I think the numbers versus like, if you look at the COVID numbers across the county, they differ from city to city. Um, and we've had, we've had that discussion about how we wish that we can manage things at a, at a local level. Our numbers here in Ansel and the surrounding area are a lot smaller, uh, than numbers in our larger communities. So, and we have a school in our town. We have the elementary school and we have a lot of, um, active families that have very strong opinions. So I think a letter of our support is with, well within our, our means.
So is council okay with, uh, since the mayor will be gone, um, uh, would the council be okay with staff drafting a letter and then, uh, we can send it, we can send it out for comments. Uh, well, you can't really do that because, um, we can send it out for you to view, but maybe we'll work with Angie, uh, and the mayor on any tweaks to the language. Um, and then, and then would you want Angie to sign the letter, mayor?
Yeah. I mean, depending on when it's complete, if, if I'm not back, then absolutely have Angie sign it. Um, if, if it's something that, you know, tweaks take a couple of days and I'm going to be home, then I'm more than willing to sign it. Um, and like Nico said, the, the intent here is not to prescribe to the, school district what their business is. And if the school district turns around and says, no, we support the, you know, the guidance is put out by the state and so be it. Uh, it's, it's more so just to support that this is, it, this is something that we are, we are listening to the local community. We are listening to parents. And that seems to be what more parents are asking for. There, there are a lot of people who are saying, you know, you know, the, the typical, no, I will not comply mindset. Um, but the, the, the main push that I am hearing from parents is, you know, we would like the school district to have the decision on this because they are the ones that are, that are dealing with it directly. Um, and I think that that is, that's a, that's a reasonable request.
And I think the way that we worded is this is on behalf of, our parents and our community, we're voicing this concern on, yeah, that would be the way to do it. We'll put something together and then, um, so you're going to be back on Friday, mayor?
Yeah, I think my flight gets in at like 10 or 11 PM on Friday, but even if we have, then I can, I can sign something here and get it sent back to you. That's not a big deal.
I'm just saying, do you, do you think that there's imminent decisions being made that this needs to get in tomorrow? We could put some.
No, no, I mean, the, the legislature isn't even in session right now. Uh, this is more just making our representation at the state level aware of, what the, the community wishes, you know, there's the, and, and I think the council's aware, you know, there has been conversations with, uh, Senator Patterson's office where I felt that they weren't reaching out and communicating, with us enough in regards to what Amzil's needs are, you know, but we also need to do our due diligence and make sure that we are communicating to them as well. And so the goal here is really just to have that communication, let them know, you know, what, what the wishes of the community are. And, and what they do with it is what they do with it. The, like, like we said, they're, they're not in session right now. So.
I think there was a school board meeting coming up too.
Yeah, I, I think there's a school board meeting coming. Is it Monday or Thursday?
I think it's.
It's this week, I think. I could be wrong.
Is it Thursday?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
I, I actually, I thought it was.
Their normal meetings are on Tuesdays.
Tonight or tomorrow. Well, we'll go ahead and put the letter together anyway, and then we'll get it off to those representatives that you guys have outlined. So I'll put it together. I'll try to put something together by the end of the day tomorrow and, and get it out right away.
It would be nice to have it. If, um, we're sending it to our, our legislator, but if we could let the school board know. That way they have that as well.
We can see, see it to them.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know, I mean, obviously it may not have a huge bearing, but it may be worthwhile to, uh, copy as well, uh, Speaker Kotek and, uh, Peter Courtney, since, uh, are the ones driving the bus for the legislature. So.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right. Can, can you email me those representatives?
Yes, I will. I'll do it.
We'll get that, we'll get everybody on this. All right. Thank you, man.
Cool. Um, anybody else have anything for good of the order?
I forgot it. Uh, our mayor received an award this last week. Um, we had a, and I forgot the name of it. Um, it was Ron, what was the name of the award that Derek got? I forgot it. I left it at his house.
Uh, I believe it's the sting, the distinguished leadership award from the Oregon Mayor's Association.
For medium cities. Medium sized.
When did we become a medium city?
I thought we were small, but, uh.
Yeah, we thought we were in the small category, but evidently we upgraded.
And we did try everything to get the mayor.
We did.
To go.
We, we, we really, really, really did. I went down.
Poor shit.
With, I went down with Doug to accept the award, um, on Derek's behalf. Uh, they talked about a lot of things. I don't think the community is aware about, aware of what he does. Um, I've been aware of some stuff and so Derek wasn't there. So I told everybody of some of the things like, there was an anonymous donation to the school district to pay off, um, unpaid school lunches, and, um, gifts to the communities during Christmas and helping families in need. Um, and a whole list of other things, uh, his work with in, um, being in service and still being able to attend the meetings, the work he did with the ice storms and the fires and, um, I told everyone despite our mayor's arrogance that he really is a good mayor and he does really want.
She actually did say that.
I did say that.
And everybody laughed.
Oh, I saw the video. Yeah.
I, um, I had a special shirt made with Derek's face on it.
Yeah.
Um.
You got lots of praise out of it.
I did, I did. I actually almost didn't wear it. Like it was really embarrassing. It was like, I had cold feet at the last minute thinking, what were we thinking when we came up with this idea? So now all those things that Derek doesn't want people to know are out there and, um, good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Well, cool. Was there anything else? Uh, if not, no correspondence, no executive session. I have, uh, 7:37. I believe that's correct. We can go ahead and adjourn the meeting.